If I may have your attention, we'll call this meeting to order. This is the February ninth, two thousand and twelve, meeting of the Jefferson City Planning and Zoning Commission. My name is Ralph Robinette. I am the chairman of the commission and will chair the meeting this evening. We will start and we will introduce the other members of the commission and city hall, starting with Councilman Shulte.
Good evening, Sean Shulte, city council liaison.
Mike Lester.
Jack Deacon.
Bob George.
Chris Jordan.
Chris Yarnell.
Dean DeToye.
Scott Stacy.
Dale Vaughn.
Eric Baron.
Janice McMillan.
Drew Hilper.
City code authorizes nine regular members and three alternates. Alternates are designated to vote upon the absence or disqualification of any regular members. A quorum is present. A quorum is five members or alternates that is necessary to conduct the business. I hereby declare that a quorum is present. Before we begin, are there any members who wish to disqualify themselves from voting on any agenda item? Seeing none. You have an agenda. There are two cases on there. Are there's anyone here to represent case P one, two, zero, zero, two, nine, 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 Diamond Ridge rezoning? All right. And I believe the other one will be presented by the city staff. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. We have no request for any reordering the agenda, therefore staff, we will go to the procedural matters.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to briefly describe the procedures of the planning commission. The proceedings of the meeting are being recorded, so I ask that when you speak, please step to the microphone and give your name and address for the record. After a brief introduction by city staff, the applicant or applicant's consultants will explain the project. The opening presentation by the applicant shall be limited to ten minutes, and the applicant shall be given three additional minutes for closing testimony if so requested. We will then ask to hear from supporters of the request. We will then ask to hear from any opponents of the request. We will then ask to hear from anyone else who wishes to speak on their request. And the testimony from supporters, opponents, or other interested parties shall be limited to three minutes each. A rebuttal testimony shall be limited to five minutes unless permission shall be granted by the commission for additional time. City staff will then describe their proposal and make their recommendation on their request. In order to reduce the time necessary to hear an application, reference to printed material, including staff reports, applicable findings, ordinances, and/or statutes, shall not be read into the record unless directed by the commission. And the staff reports and recommendations, if any, on the matter before the commission shall be presented to the commission before the commission acts on the matter. The commission will then close testimony from the floor. Prior to motion or discussion on the case, the commission will then discuss the proposal and publicly make its determination with reasons. And the form of the motion shall be positive. That is, the motion shall be made to accept the request as presented or with modifications, stipulations, or conditions. And the final vote will then be taken, ayes in favor, nays opposed. And the chairman shall announce the results of the vote, specifying the number of votes cast in favor and the number of votes cast against. And the following documents are entered as exhibits for all items under consideration at this meeting. The city code, as amended, the comprehensive plan and land use map, copies of applications under consideration, a list of property owners to whom notices were sent, the affidavit of publication of the public notice in the newspaper, copies of drawings, plans, and/or renderings under consideration, letters or memoranda from staff, the staff reports, minutes of proceedings, letters, photos, memoranda, or other materials submitted by the public or the applicant, and the rules of procedure for the Jefferson City, Missouri Planning and Zoning Commission. And these items are public record and are available for inspection in the Department of Planning and Protective Services or through the office of the city clerk. And please be advised that any items that are presented at the meeting tonight become the property of the commission. This includes any photographs, drawings, renderings, petitions, and letters.
There's been no request for the changing of the agenda, therefore the chair would move for a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Go ahead.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. As we begin tonight, you have in your correspondence here, we'll go a little bit ahead of ourselves here, that Rick Mahalovich has resigned from the commission and Michael Lester has been appointed as a regular member now, so Michael, you'll have full voting tonight. Dave Nun is absent, Bonnie, so you will get the vote also. Okay, you have before you the minutes, and that was a very long, long minute meeting. And I want to commend Ann for an excellent job she did on the minutes. I thought she just did an outstanding job and took very complete and thorough minutes. So, Ann, kudos to you. You did a super job. Thank you very much. Let you look at the minutes, just a couple minutes, and see if there's any revisions or changes to them. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
All right, we have a motion in a second to approve the minutes as presented. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Minutes are approved. And you have a packet of correspondence that you have received. You can look at those at your leisure. We also have a memorandum from Ms. McMillan, which we will talk about under number eight, under other business. Do we have any unfinished business?
No.
No unfinished business? New business? Case P one, two, zero, zero, two, nine, 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 Diamond Ridge rezoning from CO to C one, staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Up on the screen is a location map of the area of this particular request. Just to orient you first, the bottom of the screen is West Edgewood Drive, and the road that actually goes right beside the property is Diamond Ridge. And this property is located on the corner of Diamond Ridge and Emerald Lane, basically the third tier of the commercial development off of West Edgewood Drive. The photo, and I apologize, is a little bit dated. There actually is a building on this property right here, on the second tier, so to speak, of commercial development there off of West Edgewood Drive, recently constructed. This property is located on the corner, is currently zoned CO, office, commercial. The property owner, it's a two-story building, and the owner of the property has a business in the upper floor. The lower floor has been vacant and unfinished for a number of years, and the property owner has found a tenant for the lower floor, and it's a salon and baseball type of use. That particular type of use falls into the category of personal services, as defined by the zoning code. And personal services are not a permitted use in the CO zoning district. They are, however, a permitted use in the C one zoning district. So the property owner has submitted a application to rezone the property to C one in order to accommodate the new tenant. On the screen is a two thousand and eleven air photo of the property, and at the bottom of the screen you can see the new building that I pointed out earlier. The property has plenty of parking. It does border single-family residential to the north. And I do have a picture of the property, of the building. Again, the upper level is an office use, and the main access to the upper level is toward the back of the building. And then the lower level is what is being intended to be a salon, you know, spa use, and its access is essentially from the south part of the building, the lower level. Up here toward the left, you'll see that there is a six-foot-tall privacy fence on the north side of the property, kind of buffering between this commercial building and the single-family residence right beside it. Within your correspondence packet, you'll see that the property owner did go around and speak to a lot of the neighbors up the road in the residential area, and managed to get letters of support from a good number of them. With that, I'd be happy to answer any initial questions.
I guess the initial question I would have, by rezoning it to make the bottom portion of the building in compliance, will we affect anything on the main floor? Will it continue to be in compliance if we go to C one for that property?
Yes, it will. Office uses are permitted in the C one district, so yes, it wouldn't affect the upper level at all. Both uses are permitted in the C one district.
Eric, I imagine the aerial photography and things that you have up there, you can't zoom out on the zoning and all that, but it looks like to me a lot of that third row heading westerly is zone C one. We just have the CO kind of there next to Diamond Ridge and maybe going a little bit to the east. Is that a safe assumption without not having the rest of that map?
That is correct. A significant portion of the third tier is already zoned C one. It's only in this area that there is the office zoning.
Any particular reason why we did that to begin with and not kept that all the way across, or don't know?
Unfortunately, I was not here at the time, but I suspect that as with new development, new areas, I wasn't quite sure what the development pattern would be in the area, and so that was an item that was built in to the initial zoning plan. Now that the development pattern is pretty much established, it's a little bit easier to envision what types of uses would go in there.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff at this time? Okay, who is here to present this case?
How do I turn this on? Testing? I will not take ten minutes. My name's Max Fisher. I'm here with my wife, Ann, and the architect, who has drawn plans for La Cien. And what we would like to do, as Eric said, is to rezonate from CO to C one. One change that is in the building and is on the lower level, you'll see a blue sign there, and basically that lower level can be divided up into thirds, and so on the lower level, the closest part to the street, has a law firm in it, who I rent to. That leaves the other two-thirds of the lower level, which is close to, but not quite, three thousand square feet, that is the space that is being considered to be for the hair salon. I did go around to every single property owner. I started with the residential first. I started with the commercial second. And I did speak with everybody and said that I had an interest in trying to get it rezoned from CO to C one, and that we were looking at La Cien going in there. I did secure from everybody, both residential and commercial, except one person who said he wasn't sure if he was in support or not in support. But I did get everybody's saying that they would support it. I also said that I did not know, you know, exactly everything that a C one rezoning would encompass, but I do have an interest as being not only the property owner, but I do run my Edward Jones office from the upper level there, and I do have an interest in the type of tenants that are in that building. So I told everybody who I got the letter from, I said, "I can't tell you in five years or six years, you know, what might be there, but I do have an interest in what is in that building myself." I... Just answer any questions that you have.
Does anybody have any questions, Mr. Fisher? Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents here to speak in favor of this proposal? Is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to this proposal? Seeing none, we will close the public testimony. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Staff is and does recommend approval of the rezoning request. The comprehensive plan does identify this area as being intended for commercial use. The comp plan does not differentiate between different levels of commercial, just identifies it as commercial. So the request would be seen to be in support of, or the comprehensive plan would support the request. The form of the motion is for approval of the request to rezone the property from CO to C one.
Any questions of staff at this time? Discussion by commissioners.
Am I voting tonight?
Not yet.
Okay.
You ready? You're not voting yet, Dale. It's good to have you warmed up, ready to go, though. The chair would entertain a motion to approve this rezoning from CO to C one.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the commission recommend approval of the rezoning from CO to C one.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, a discussion. Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passed unanimously. Next case. P one, two, zero, zero, three, rezoning plan for proposed meadows by the Club Annexation Area. I, staff report, we'll start there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, to orient you to the location of this particular request, and to back up just a moment. City staff have been working with the annexation committee of the city council, and have been directed to prepare a plan of intent for the area shown on the screen there, to annex the area by voter-approved annexation, so it'd be going to a vote of the people. So the staff is in the process of preparing that plan of intent, and one component of the plan of intent is a proposed zoning plan, which is why we're here tonight. The proposed annexation area, which has been named the Meadows by the Club Annexation Area, it's shown up on the screen to orient you a little bit here. In the upper right-hand corner is the West Truman Boulevard, South Country Club Drive, and Highway fifty interchange, with the shopping mall just off the map to the upper right. And then the Jefferson City Country Club is located right there. If you were to drive out on Highway fifty, past that interchange aways, you would very soon be outside the city limits at this point right here. The city limit line, basically after crossing the highway right here, zigzags its way through the Meadows by the Club subdivision, and then even further kind of takes a strange course around various properties in this area before heading further south. The proposed annexation area would consolidate some of that city limit line by incorporating a number of these properties, including a good portion of the Meadows by the Club subdivision houses that are located outside the city limit, yet the residents that live in those houses have to drive through the city limit to get to. I have another map. This one, a two thousand and eleven air photo, which shows a little bit more detail in terms of some of the uses and buildings in the area. The annexation area is outlined in yellow. You'll see that there are a number of residential lots in the Meadows by the Club subdivision, including a lake that's controlled by the subdivision. And then also J.C. Mattress Factory property, located right there. And then the proposed annexation area does cross the highway and include two hotels on the other side of the highway. There's also Quarry, and then a single-family residence right here, and then another single-family residence right here on a very large tract of ground. This is a land use map of the area, to point out a couple of the different colors here. Again, the annexation area is shown in black this time. Yellow is single-family residential uses. So there are a number of single-family residential uses in the Meadows by the Club subdivision, and then also to the south. There's also a number of attached single-family uses, sometimes referred to as duplexes, although it doesn't necessarily have to mean a duplex. The Meadows by the Club subdivision, a number of the residences constructed, they're houses each on individual lots, but they're attached to their neighbor, so they look like a duplex, but they're on their own property, usually refer to them as townhomes. In red is commercial uses. You'll notice the two hotels are shown in red, and then also the commercial portion of the J.C. Mattress Factory. The J.C. Mattress Factory consists of both a commercial furniture sales use, and then also as a factory use and distribution type of use. And so in order to recognize that on the land use map, the factory use and the distribution use are shown in pink for industrial manufacturing type uses. The Quarry property is shown as vacant or other. There is, again, a single-family residence right there at the end of a very long driveway going down to South Country Club Drive. And then also a large tract of land, which we identified as agricultural use, because it is so large. There is one single-family house on it. We affectionately have referred to it as a turtle farm, and unfortunately, I think the name stuck. It's basically a piece of property that was owned by some conservation-oriented people in the past, who put some restrictions on the property as to what it can be used for, and essentially tied its use down to being very conservation-oriented. If I understand correctly, it essentially cannot be developed. That is the land use map of the proposed annexation area. And then the next map that I have is the proposed zoning, which is in your packet as well. The proposed zoning for the annexation area is based on the existing land uses within the area. So the single-family detached homes are shown as RS one and RS two. The single-family attached homes are shown as RD, in brown. The commercial areas are shown as C two, including the vacant Quarry site, as identified as a C two, general commercial, with the manufacturing and distribution portions of the J.C. Mattress Factory being identified as M one, which is light industrial. And then for the single-family use and the turtle farm, being identified as an RS two, slightly, well, single-family residential zoning district, similar to what is adjacent Within your packet, there is an excerpt from the plan of intent, the existing and proposed land uses section of the plan of intent. It identifies acreages for the various land uses, descriptions of the various zoning districts and uses. Also, within your packet, you'll see that there is a proposed resolution to endorse the annexation of the area and recommend the zoning plan for the area. The staff recommendation, to jump forward to that point, is for two items. One, approval of the proposed zoning plan for the Meadows by the Club Annexation Area, and then also approval of the resolution supporting the annexation of the Meadows by the Club Annexation Area, and forwarding on the zoning plan to the city council. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, our real feeling is that those are a couple of churches and some other benevolent organizations that probably will... We believe there's a good chance they might voluntarily annex in, so we basically wanted to do this and then see if they would voluntarily come in thereafter.
I'm sorry, what was that? Oh, this? Me up here? No, they're both red, I think, the different shade there might just because of the parking or something to do with the air photo.
Is that that lower right corner there, that sort of yellow color, is that that Shepherley property along Country Club? That would be the Shepherley property there. Okay.
Where the quarry's at? Wouldn't that be a better zoning for like an M one, M two, since there's not... Is there a commercial building back there?
No, there's not a commercial building back there. Quarries are a conditional use of the C two district. It's my understanding that it's essentially inactive or rarely used.
And that's where a rental, was it a rental business?
Yeah, there is some property next to it, just to the west, that you might be thinking of. It's not included in this annexation area.
Okay.
Yes, because general retail is not permitted in the M one. So in order to have the commercial portion of the furniture sales, they need a C two zoning, so. The zoning of the right-of-way really does not matter a whole lot. It is a state highway, but we do apply zoning, you know, throughout the city, so every portion of, you know, of... So, so every, every portion of, you know, of, of, uh, land and inside the city limits has a zoning district applied to it. Um, oftentimes, it's the zoning of the property that's next to it. That, that's, um, how, how we, uh, we, we extend the zoning district out into the right-of-way. Well, es- essentially, the, the property next to it that's in the city limit is, is zoned R S one. And the property on the other side of, of the right-of-way is outside the city limits and has no zoning. So it's essentially just an extension of the R S one all the way, uh, across to the, um, to the other right-of-way line. That, um, should not be an issue in the future. Uh, the only way that it would be an issue is if a portion of right-of-way were to be vacated. And that right-of-way having an R S one zoning on it, if it was, for example, something commercial beside the right-of-way that was acquiring some of the right-of-way in order to, to do something. Um, it could be that they might need a, a rezoning of that small portion of vacated right-of-way. Uh, in, in order to kind of clean up the zoning, uh, in a case like that, that is an extremely rare event. And, um, rather than try to presume what the zoning would be on, on the other side of the, the right-of-way line, it's, it's better just to, uh, uh, lea- yeah, it is, it is essentially a mapping convenience. That's correct.
Um, we did have a neighborhood meeting with the property owners in Meadows by the Club, um, right before Christmas. And had a pretty good reception from those property owners. Um, but, um, the, the remaining contact has been by letter. Um, although I did ta- uh, speak with the owners of the, the quarry. But, uh, remaining contact has been by, by written communication.
Each property owner was, was sent a letter and that letter's contained, uh, within your packet. Uh, so you can, you can read what, what they were sent. Along with the letter, um, a, uh, a request for, for change and, and proposed zoning form was, was sent, uh, with that. Uh, in, in the event that a property owner, uh, did not agree with what, what was being proposed for their property, they could, could request a change. We did get one form back and, and that's included, um, I think there with your, your correspondence. Along with, um, a memo from myself and, and essentially, uh, the request. I think there's maybe a little bit of confusion about how, how the zoning, that the city zoning worked on the property. Um, and, and we did, uh, contact that, that property owner and, and, uh, converse with them. And, and they're, they're okay with what is being proposed, uh, for their property. Uh, this is, uh, a, a public hearing, so if there is anyone in attendance tonight, they could also comment on the, the zoning plan.
Is, uh, is what you referred to as the turtle farm, is that, is that the same as the Swartz, uh, Trust or is it? Okay.
Yes.
Any other questions of staff at this time? Is that your presentation or would you like to make, uh, part of the public testimony as a proponent at this time? Or want to hear from the rest of the public?
Uh, well, I think that's all I have for, for now at least. Um, uh, but yes, if, uh, could open, uh, testimony from the public.
Okay. Are there any proponents here that are in favor of this proposal? Are there any opponents that wish to testify in opposition to this proposal? Seeing none, we will close the public testimony. Staff report.
I'll keep it very brief. Uh, staff recommendation is for, uh, approval of the zoning plan, uh, for the Meadows by the Club Annexation Area. And then also approval of the resolution supporting the annexation of the Meadows by the Club Annexation Area. Uh, if that could be done in two separate motions.
Any questions of staff? Discussion by the commissioners. We will do this in two motions. Our first motion, we will have to approve the zoning plan for the annexation area. And then we will approve the resolution supporting the annexation. So the chair at this time would, uh, entertain a motion for approval of the zoning plan for the Meadows by the Club Annexation Area.
Move to approve the zoning plan for the Meadows by the Club Annexation Area.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Seeing none, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye. Opposed nay. Motion carries unanimously. Now we will take a motion to approve the resolution supporting the annexation plan. Do I hear a motion of that effect?
Move to approve the resolution supporting the annexation of the Meadows by the Club Annexation Area.
I'll second that motion.
We have a second, any discussion on that motion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed nay. Motion carries unanimously. Miscellaneous reports. Other business, I think at this time, we will just, it'll be informational, amending chapter thirty-two. Would you like to explain what's occurring here, Ms. McMillan, please?
Well, I'll do that for, if that's okay, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Uh, what this, there's, there's a provision in the code that says if, if a business doesn't, uh, want to build a sidewalk on their property, the code lists out a number of reasons whereby they would be excused from, uh, the necessity of, of, uh, building sidewalks. And the process for that is that the person makes an application to, uh, the director of Planning and Protective Services, which is Janice. She takes a look at the code and see if they're, and sees if their reason for not wanting to build a sidewalk, uh, falls within some exception. If it does, she grants it. If it doesn't, she, she denies it. However, like all administrative procedures, or at least we try to have this for all administrative procedures, there's an appeal process. And currently, that goes to the city council and they look at it to make sure that, uh, Janice or her successor someday, uh, made the right decision. You know, applying facts to the law. We had one of these come up, uh, with Saint Mary's, I'm sorry, uh, uh, J C M G, sorry, recently. And it was quite a long hearing and I enjoyed it as an attorney, but other people didn't necessarily. Uh, but, uh, uh, we had that hearing and it worked okay, you know, and the council came to a conclusion. But I think, uh, uh, councilman suggested that's probably better for planning and zoning. And, and the reason, there's two, really two reasons. One is that you all have heard all those presentations before and they came in front of you and, and chairman always asks, do you agree with all the conditions that the city has put upon you? And then they say yes. And then you approve it. Well, you approved it with a sidewalk. So for some reason or another, they're coming back and saying that wasn't right. Now, in my mind, there could certainly be some legitimate discoveries that they found some reason that now it's not feasible for whatever, whatever reason. So the council seems to me, and this is not yet gone to the council, but went through the, uh, Public Works Committee, that, that you're the appropriate body for that. You've already heard this once. They've already told you that that's what they're gonna do. So, uh, they ought not skip over you. Now, in this regard, it'd be a little bit different because you would be the final decision-making authority for the, for the city. Uh, if, if they disagree with something you did, they could take it to the circuit court. Uh, and then there's an added benefit of when you remove the council, because they're the rule makers. Uh, it's not always good to have the rule makers be the rule enforcers. Because there's certainly a tendency to say, we don't necessarily have to follow the, our own rules that we've set up because we make the rules. So it's often much better for other bodies, uh, to, uh, in- enforce the rules, uh, and not, that don't make them. And, and I kind of followed that logic and think it's a good idea. So there's a proposal that'll be going to the council, I'm pretty sure, on, uh, February twentieth, which by the way, is, uh, Hazleton. If anyone wants to come and listen to all that again, it'll be another public hearing there. But, uh, this'll be going for the council on the twentieth and wanted to kind of make you aware of that. Um, and certainly if you all have some comments or some opposition or in support of it, we'll certainly take that up to the, to the council. This is kind of a function that Board of Adjustment does a lot. They kind of hear appeals of, of certain things. But in this case, because it's really, it's really a plan that was submitted to you that you ruled on and heard all the evidence on it. It makes a lot of sense to come back to you in that regard. So it's a little bit different role for P and Z, but, uh, something I think you all are quite capable of and probably a, a good, good process. So I'm happy to answer any questions and happy to take any comments back to the council. I don't know if Councilman Schulte wants to say anything or not.
Councilman Schulte, would you like to say anything, sir?
Referring to the J C M G sidewalk, what sidewalk, it, there's already one there, correct? It's the one that goes up the hill, up, uh, what is that, uh, what road is that?
They have, um, they have a sidewalk that, um, goes through part of their property. They have a greenway that goes through part of their, part of the property as well. On the last plan, there, what was shown on this plan was an extension of the sidewalk from where the, basically from the driveway or where the greenway ends over by the substation. Along, uh, along stadium up to Satinwood. And then an extension, uh, all the way up Edgewood to their property line. And what they appealed was the construction of the sidewalk that would connect the greenway to a sidewalk on stadium.
But we're not, we're not discussing that tonight, we're just discussing.
That one's actually, that's done and over, but, uh, if this passes, it'll come before you guys again. And I guess I should add one other thing. You don't have to be an expert in construction or planning or anything like that because, you know, what your job is, is they present their reason. And essentially, you look in the code and make sure that Janice made that right decision. And that's, uh, uh, something that you all are absolutely qualified to do. You know, we all believe Janice will make the right decision, but it is possible she makes the wrong one. And it's possible maybe her successor, I'm sure someday she'll retire and happily and, uh, her successor will have to make those decisions. And while we don't, it's not any blame or criticism of Janice that there's an appeal process. It's just we want to make sure that, you know, when, especially when it's one individual making that decision, we like to have some oversight.
And you might make a note that Ms. Cotton had to leave, so now you can vote, Dale, if anything comes up.
Just so you know, too, that you call her Bonnie every time, her actual name is Bunny.
Bunny, okay. I called her Ms. Cotton this time. Any other questions of staff?
They don't need any thing from us on this, or just an information?
No, information, but if you have any comments you want us to take back, if you all just think that's the dumbest idea you ever heard, wow, take that up. Or if you like added responsibility, or if you just want to quietly accept your new role, we'll take that, too.
You want, uh, you want to vote on it? Any other business? Dale, would you like to make the motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
All right, all in favor of German indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, thank you for coming, much shorter meeting.